You can still hear me, right? Even if you're leaving? Easy? Tell me when I need to go? Would you even give me the clue? Okay. My name is Massimo Spadaci. I'm a broker in the Valley. Tourist broker. And I didn't prepare a speech, although I've been on this one very, very long time, since they won against it all this way. There's certain things that I like about this, certain things that I really don't like about this. But I'm gonna pretty much tell you my experience, okay? My engagement with SOS was to actually go into the fields, into the streets and talk to people of Temecula. I mind you, I'm Italian, born and raised, okay? I just transferred here about 11 years ago and I fell in love with this town. So I was out there, listening to the people. I know you guys go out there too. I've seen Mr. Buster, I've seen Mr. Stone, Jeff. You are a different district, so I haven't seen you nor I haven't seen Ashley, Mr. Ashley and Deputy County Counsel. I've been meeting her here every time, right in the back seats, right there, okay? But let me tell you, it's a pretty good exercise to hear what the people has to say. And my task was to actually pick up signatures from people that they were against the project. And it was really tough even to get the possibility to go in front of a Walmart to where the people, you know, are gonna be most likely living in the area, right on 79 South, and then really literally look at the mountains, you know, the mountains chains or the hills to where the quarry is supposed to go. And I was completely surprised that a lot of people did not know about this and they live in Red Oak. And I'm saying, "Where are you people? What do you know?" And as soon as I mention something that I said, they'll go, "Are you kidding me?" Well, you know, "Where are you? I have 30 seconds." So just to let you know, people of Temecula are really, really, even if they're not here, I'm telling you, they're there. They're really there, I guarantee you. And they're gonna, they're gonna voice their opinion one way or another. So, you know, I just wanna let you know from a little soldier in the trenches, okay? You take care. Thanks for the time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker would be Robert Mayby. Is Marion Byers here? Would you please make your way to the further room? You'll be next. Mr. Mayby.
Somebody left something up here.
Someone left a white cellphone with a white and red stripe cover. He's coming back up again. How would I know the white and red stripe cover was yours, yes?
I apologize. We're like parsley.
Good afternoon. Robert Mayby speaking. I oppose 3.56. I believe that anything this important to the environment needs more, not less, time for permits. When you have a man like Supervisor Stone, who had been prosecuted by the Attorney General for fraud, deceit, and corruption, and fined $10,000 voting on this issue, it puts a smell of dead fish in the air. Every time you amend an ordinance, it seems to benefit the supervisors, not the taxpayers. How much did it cost to put this on the agenda? I'd like to ask Supervisor Buster, are you going to get any money for your vote like you did from Waste Management years ago, as reported in the Press Enterprise? And Mr. Stone, why don't you tell them how concerned you are over the environmental disaster that's in your area on Batista Canyon Access Road, which Mr. Ashley brought out in his Agenda April 11th last year? And why don't you tell them about the Corps of Engineers report to you that the channel is going to fail? They believe it's going to fail and why? And why don't you share with the public how that was done without any permits, one of your little projects? Why don't you share some of those things? You know, you're so corrupt that you're corrupting everybody that's around you. Thank you.
Thank you. Marion Byers is next. And is Kimberly Adams here? Kimberly, would you make your way to the further room? You'll be after, uh, Marion, Marion.
Well, I had my speech set up to say good morning, but I think we're in the afternoon now.
We're definitely in the afternoon.
Yes. So, good afternoon Chairman Tavaleoni, who's not here, but so good afternoon Mr. Benoit, Supervisor DeMoyne, and the rest of the board. My name is Marion Byers and I live in Dulles, just five miles west of Temecula. Now, I had a long speech and as people went through it, I crossed one section off and another section off, and a third and a fourth and a fifth section off. So we are left with one section. So I just wanted to point out that at the May 15 hearing, during which the Liberty Quarry EIR was certified, one stated intention was to promote compromise. If you remember, that was one of the reasons why the EIR was certified. But this compromise that was sought has actually resulted in this very aggressive move by Granite to reapply for permit, maybe not aggressive, but then to also demand that a critical part of the review process be revised, namely the fast-tracking. And that is why we're all here again, yet again, wearing the lovely coat of orange. As a result of Granite's demand for fast-tracking for Liberty Quarry too, we now find ourselves at the point where any new surface mining could qualify for fast-tracking. That seems like much too broad a solution to such a narrow issue that we had of one applicant looking for a speedy way to have their strip mine approved. Now any quarry application can be fast-tracked. It's worth noting that, as has been noted before, it is not so much time that's an issue for Granite. It is actually the surety that their gravel quarry will be approved, not so much the timing of it. Thank you.
Thank you. You were Ms. Byers, correct? Okay, thanks. Kimberly Adams, excuse me. Kimberly will be followed by Doug McAllister.
Hello Chairman, Supervisors. My name is Kimberly Adams. I'm the founding president of the Temecula Valley Convention Visitors Bureau. Before I start today, I'd like to really recognize an industry and a community that I am just so proud of. The City Council of Temecula, our leaders at Pachanga. I just, I'm just so impressed by the intelligence and the honesty. And you too, Supervisor Stone, who has been nothing but a positive force in our community and would never go into another district and oppose something that would not be good for them, as you have told me in personal conversations that we've had. So I appreciate that. With that said, I'd like to tell you a little bit about our industry. We are a business of travelers. We represent all of you when you're going out after a long, busy day of work, heading to a place where you need to just get away. We are an industry that houses your, maybe, first-time employees, your family members, house cleaners, transportation, restaurant, and all sorts of industries that support a thriving industry, which is called travel and tourism. Temecula has had its challenges. We have grown our industry in the past seven years from $131 million in revenue, which is economic impact, which is the tourism hook where people come to decide if they're gonna have businesses within your community. We grew that industry from $131 million to $603 million with over 6,600 employees. Those employees I was talking about, the housekeepers, the transportation people, the restaurant people that serve you at lunch, and also the winery owners and farmers. In 2009, our industry lost $100 million. Yes, $100 million. I'm here representing our small-town hotel owners who had once sold a hotel room for $100, was forced to sell for $39. I'm sorry, I already noticed my time is up. So I'm gonna say some really important things.
You have a minute remaining, so.
Okay. I'm here to tell you we're back. We're back in thriving numbers. We're back with hard work and millions of dollars to market our destination with 7.6% increase generating from an economic downfall of $600 million with 6,200 jobs and $5 million in local taxes that serve our police and fire and roads and also help the public sector and private sector and city employees. $18 million in state taxes. We've also, within our 6,200 jobs, we've generated $180 million in wages within our community and that's just in Temecula Valley. So I hate to think that some of my colleagues have said that you've already made your mine up and your decision. I hope that you reconsider that and what it takes to market and bring back a community who is thriving that you would consider if you do approve this with Supervisor's recommendations, in addition to allocate money to market a destination that could be devastated by the implementations of putting this fast-track through.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Doug McAllister, Mayor of Marietta. Doug will be followed by John Fennell.
Mr. Chairmans, Supervisors, and Colleagues. My name is Doug McAllister. I am the mayor of the city of Marietta. I'm not running for anything today. I'm here, I'm a short time, trying to go quietly into the night and rather unsuccessfully so. I am here because of this whole discussion that was here today. It's a confusion about the position of Marietta on this topic. There are folks I respect on both sides of this issue, including Granite Construction, which just delivered a fabulous interchange to Marietta on Cal Oaks in the 15. And while I strongly feel that this entire discussion underscores the appearance of Riverside County continuing to be San Diego's dumping ground, I'm here today to primarily stand for the priority of local control. And in that respect, I can officially stand here with Marietta's sister city, Temecula. I have empathy with you as an elected. When it comes to dealing with controversial issues, contrary to positions tend to complicate, confuse, distract, and generally make it hard to see the forest for the trees. I'm here to lend my voice to illustrate the message being conveyed at the local level. What we hear there is that, that message is simply this, that the foundation for how we govern in this country, here in Riverside especially, is being threatened. So let's look at the forests and the trees. Back in 2009, Marietta passed a resolution supporting Temecula's attempt to annex the area that included the quarry. It's Marietta's position that this question should have been decided by the ones closest to the impacts, by Temecula. The consistency of the denial since that point, prior to our point. At LAFCO, the denial of the application was led by those furthest from the impacts. The EIR certification was led by those furthest from the impacts. And now we have this fast-track discussion and if it passes, it will be led by those furthest from the impacts. Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask for, if I need to, three more minutes from someone else. If the courtesy I would give you as well in my chambers, 'cause I'm running out of time at this point. I'll be quick.
Well, yeah, that's fine, Doug. It says courtesy to another elected. We'll do that.
Thank you. Sure. Local control and continuity demands a locally responsive government. It's not what's being exhibited here in this case. Certification for the EIR was approved. The fast-track of the mine will be approved. Problem of leaving out Mr. Stone's addition of local control authority reflects our concern of Marietta. The alternative responsive government is the government taking responsibility. Our history is replete with such examples. It's how we became a country to begin with. But this continues, I do caution you. Do not take the talk of cessation lightly. That movement has been growing for 10 years. I know. They've been all coming to me to talk about it. I want to thank you today very clearly for your thoughtful consideration on this issue. I sincerely believe that all five of you are doing the best you can to deal with a controversial subject. I do not support attributing any personal attacks in any of these discussions. Any thoughtful elected empathizes with what you're dealing with right now. But let me simplify it. Sacrificing the sanctity of local control on any other altar, no matter how noble that altar might seem to be, is a cancer to the otherwise inspired nature of governing this country. And Mr. Tavaleoni, you're running for Congress and I hope you win. I do. But I hope that how you handle this issue will not reflect, or will reflect, how you're going to govern in the effect of protecting local control when you're in Congress. The last thing we need is more centralized, disconnected government in DC. Mr. Stone has justified his request for enhanced oversight. And I believe that request should be afforded to the supervisor of any of these issues that is closest to the impacts. Consider what those closest to the impacts believe and maybe they may know what's best for their regions that they represent. That means listen to Temecula. That means listen to the two supervisors that are close, whose districts are closest, because they know what's going on there. I'm somewhat surprised that I hear voices from all over the county and you see the one pattern, the further away from this issue things get, the more in support of this impact we hear, including a friend and colleague of mine from the Coachella Valley area who sits on the Board of the League of Cities whose mandate is to protect local control. I don't understand the inconsistency. Folks, this is a matter of respect for the citizens. This is a matter of respect for the city of Temecula. This is a matter of respect for the two supervisors tasked with representing those, that region. I trust that at the end of the day, we'll parse through all the weeds, all the trees, and get back to the forest, which is, listen to the people. It's all about local control. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Doug. All right, John. Is it Fennell or Fennel? Fennell, thank you. And if Mr. Hammett, is Tom Hammett back? All right, anyone else who wants to speak that hasn't already spoken or given their three minutes, you can come forward right after Mr. Fennell. Mr. Fennell.
All right, thank you for allowing me to speak today. And I am, of course, against Agenda Item 3.56 and I have four very common sense reasons for being against this. Number one, I've lived in the Temecula Valley for 25 years in the same house. This house is directly in line with the wind that blows through the gap there. We call it the rainbow gap. It blows almost every day. This is undeniable. There might be a handful of days a year that the wind does not blow through there and it blows pretty hard at times. That's reason number one. Reason number two, there will be 640 trucks that work in that area in the day. And I imagine we're looking at a 10, 12-hour day. That's about, I don't know, 10 trucks an hour? No. No, 150 trucks an hour, or something like that. 50 trucks an hour. That's one truck per minute at least that'll be working in that area. And it works out to over 1,000 truck trips in a day. That's a lot of diesel fumes, even though Mr. Johnson will tell you that these diesels are gonna be clean. But common sense will tell you that's pollution. Number two. Number three, I mean, there's an asphalt batching plant associated with this. It's gonna be big. This is oil. It's gonna be an oily smell. Now, if you lived where I live, you would not want this air floating through there. Now, Mr. Johnson will tell you that this is all covered and you won't smell it. But this stuff, you'll smell. You can't hide that. He'll say, "You can't see the quarry, but I'll tell you what. You're gonna smell it there and you're gonna hear it." Number four, the big hole. The big hole. They're gonna plant natives in the big hole. And lucky, they'll be lucky if they can get those plants to grow. Don't ignore the pleas of 200,000 to 300,000 people in southwest Riverside County. Vote no on fast-tracking the Liberty Quarry. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fennell. I'm gonna call on Tom Hammett one more time. Mr. Hammett, are you here? All right. If no other speakers are on this item, then I will call on Supervisor Stone.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair and ladies and gentlemen, both opponents and proponents. I appreciate that you're all here. I apologize that you're all here again. This is like a seven-year issue that just refuses to go away. Millions of dollars are being spent on legal fees. I've always been a very strong proponent of local control. That's one of the reasons why I ran for City Council in 1992 for the city of Temecula, because the county wasn't looking after our interests. That's why I've been cooperating. And let me say for the record that I'm very much in favor of doing what we can on this board to create new realistic jobs. And I believe if you look at the behavior of this board, that we have done a lot to effectuate job creation in this county. We have formed our exportation department here in the county. Tom Freeman has done an outstanding job so that we can market our products not only across state lines but across international lines. We have used our economic development department, gone to trade shows and boasted about Riverside County and what a wonderful place that it is and is becoming. A few decades ago, Riverside County was a sleepy county, the dumping ground of many other counties. But we have some premier communities that are growing in this county that are giving us a lot of clout. I think Temecula is one of the shining beacons. I think Palm Desert is one of the shining beacons. I think La Quinta is one of the shining beacons. I think Harris is going to be a wonderful city. Economic base, we reduced our fees in this county to encourage economic development. I have colleagues that sit on the March JPA to try to bring more industry, making us the inland port so that we can create jobs for our residents. Complex projects that could cause significant impacts, especially health issues for our present constituents need to be cautiously examined while doing what we can to expedite projects. We have a list in southwest Riverside County of many physicians that have raised the flags of caution with one project. Can we put that overhead up? Roy's got it. If we had four or five physicians that testified that this quarry was gonna create, or a potential quarry in southwest Riverside County was gonna create havoc for our residents, the Board would take it and would consider it. But when you have hundreds of local physicians, my colleagues in another life, and I know most of these physicians personally, and you would think that, you know, if we provide an approval for a project that is gonna create more health hazards, that these physicians are gonna make more money. But they've taken an oath, an oath to heal people and protect people. And we have, I think, some of the finest physicians in southwest Riverside County. And they all have placed their names on this petition, if you will, to give a warning that there could be catastrophic consequences of a quarry that has already been vetted and already denied. Yet we're going through this quasi-exercise of now, expediting the same project under a different name. We've heard from attorneys representing SOS. We've heard from attorneys representing Pachanga. We've heard from attorneys representing Temecula. To my knowledge, these are three independent legal firms. And they have confirmed my contention that the county of Riverside is not following CEQA in making this amendment, where it says the proposed order ordinance revision shall be heard in a public hearing before a lead agency plan to commission. I cancel, I can't support the amendments. And I think that if the Board were to join me in approving those amendments, I think it would go a long way to showing the public that we are truly a democratic Board of Supervisors and that we are truly transparent and that there truly are no, are ulterior motives to this Agenda Item. I ask my fellow supervisors to please keep our unwritten rule to allow each supervisor to lead or oppose efforts in each and our respective districts. I have proudly served on this board for eight years. I feel I've been a good partner to each and every one of my Board members, past and present. I will say that I had a great working relationship with former Supervisor Roy Wilson. May he rest in peace. I don't believe Supervisor Roy Wilson would have this Agenda Item, forcing his will on my constituents without my blessing. And I appeal to Supervisor Benoit, who I have a lot of respect for, but I have to say that I'm extremely disappointed as this has become the most divisive issue that this Board has ever seen and maybe this county has ever seen. And I've also had a good working relationship with Gary Johnson. And we've agreed to disagree. I think he has seen the enormous opposition. The city of Temecula is opposed. The city of Temecula is opposed. The Pachanga Band of Indians is opposed. The Temecula Chamber of Commerce is opposed. The Temecula Visitors Bureau is opposed. Cal State San Diego is opposed. The supervisor representing the first district is opposed. The supervisor representing the third district is opposed. The Planning Commission, that we each appoint a member of the Planning Commission, opposed this. If we pass this today, let's just dismiss the Planning Commission. What do we need them for? If we're not gonna listen to them and we don't value their evaluation of projects? Let us not confirm what one of the speakers, Kenny Calvin, commented in saying politicians are disconnected from the people. I think that's one of the biggest complaints that I hear from people in the community. And I hear from people in the community ever since I've been on the Board of Supervisors and I push to have our Board meetings televised. I want it to be more transparent. Well, a side effect of that is when I go to the grocery store, I'm there for three hours talking about issues or I'm going to the drugstore talking about issues, which I love to do. I just wish I could empathize or share the empathy that I have with my constituents that come up to me and Jeff said, or, or share the empathy that I, I, I have with my constituents that come up to me and Jeff said, what are we going to do? We've got to stop this quarry. We cannot have this happen here. You've got to go talk to supervisor Benoit. You've got to go talk to supervisor Ashley. You've got to go talk to supervisor Tavalloni, please. We love living here. I have women that break down in tears. They said, please, go talk to all five of them, or four of them. I explained the laws that, you know, I can't, I can only talk to, to one of them. You have to make that appeal to them. I'll do the best that I can in a public hearing. But I can't tell you the hundreds of people that have begged me to come talk to each and every one of you to appeal to your hearts and not shove a project down the throats of a community, of a valley that just doesn't want this project. We've heard that, you know, jobs is the issue. I, I want jobs. We'll do everything we can to create jobs. We've heard from very competent professionals that this is, this is like the, the poster child of why we're here today to provide jobs. When this project isn't going to deliver jobs, if it ever will, for many, many years to come. And I believe, like the scientists that, that have PhDs and study these kinds of things, that these jobs are just going to be relocated from one place to another. I mean, the, the applicant has a quarry, you know, in San Diego County that's kind of shut down. They have aggregate there. There's no aggregate because there's nothing being built. Well, they just finished the two fifteen freeway between the junction of the fifteen and two fifteen all the way to Scott Road. Nobody came to the board of supervisors and say, hey, we don't have any aggregate to finish the project. We already heard that we have a thirty mines in the state of Calif, in, in Riverside County, ten percent of the, the mines in the state. And we're the only state that locally controls mines rather than the state or the federal government, which I support. I support local control. But the jobs issue with rejected, with respect to this agenda item is smoke and mirrors. And if it's not smoke and mirrors, then I would hope that my colleagues will support my amendments. And then it's not smoke and mirrors. Because then each of us could decide what is in the best interest of our community. Will something truly provide more jobs at the expense of the impacts that it's going to be creating? I would not want, I would want to oppose anything on supervisor Benoit's district that is contrary to the health and safety of his residents. I would not do that. I would follow his lead, maybe if I didn't even agree with his view. But he has to deal with his constituents that vote him in office. I don't have to deal with his constituents that don't vote for me. But we have to have these demising lines on a board of supervisors if we are in fact to be a productive accomplished body. But right now, we're going into disarray. We're taking all these demising lines and we're throwing them out the window. We're spending, or I should say granted now is going to be spending millions of dollars on, on lawsuits. We're spending an inordinate amount of time with our staff when times are tough. We're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to process the new applications. We've got a wine country plan that's going to create potentially two thousand jobs, my friends. I didn't fast track it. I didn't fast track it for a reason because we needed to vet all the issues to make sure we do it right. That's why any kind of a quarry, whether it's Liberty Quarry or any quarry, I can't believe that any of my fellow supervisors would allow a new quarry to come into their districts and fast track them. I'll guarantee you that Ms. Henderson, council member from La Quinta, who I have tremendous respect for. We've been serving together for a long time. We agree on some issues and we disagree with some issues. And I think La Quinta is a beautiful community. But I'll guarantee you that the hills behind La Quinta, if that became the target for a quarry, I will guarantee you that supervisor Benoit, I will guarantee you that council member Henderson and that community would be outraged if they would consider some scarring project like that in the beautiful Coachella Valley. We have greater than forty beautiful parks in the city of Temecula. Beautiful parks in the city of Marietta. You go out on a weekend and it's, it's, it's tough for these organized teams to find space to play soccer and baseball and pop ball and football. You can imagine what the composites that are going to be in the air from blasting and prevailing winds, the kind of health hazards that our two hundred plus physicians have warned us about. Alice Sullivan, Chamber of Commerce, I mean, she's chartered with bringing jobs to the area. How can you have a Chamber of Commerce with over a thousand members, one of the biggest chambers in the state of California, standing up and saying, this isn't good for us? These jobs are not good for us. We don't, we're not even convinced that those jobs are even going to come. She says, don't compromise the health and safety in our local economy. We don't know what kind of dust is going to come from the prevailing winds. It's going to go on these vineyards that have already had the terrible devastation of the glassy wing sharpshooter that almost decimated our wine country. We already have developers standing up in line. They do seventy, two hundred square foot lots and just blanketing our wine country with homes. And today is another remarkable day, I might say. For the first time, I have to say I agree with Mr. Grant on, on your, on your comments today. And there's been comments that this should, this project should not, should not come at taxpayer expense. I think that there is a significant, significant taxpayer exposure with not only the development of this mine, but a reclamation process that is still undefined. Do the democratic principles that we all treasure and constantly are under attack ultimately to be an endangered species? Do our residents of that have spent seven years with the obsession with this project and their desire just to have the quality of life they have today, wrong? Will we flush all this seven-year effort down the drain in just ninety days? Supervisor Tavalloni, as I've mentioned before, I have a tremendous amount of respect for you. I consider you and supervisor Buster to be the, the senior spokespeople, statesmen for this board. And you voted against the project because you said, there's just too many uncertainties. Nothing has changed. Yet you supported the EIR with the hopes that there would be some kind of a compromise. Today, I don't see any compromise. In fact, I've seen an accelerated process to deliver a quarry project that southwest Riverside County just does not want. In fact, I think with all the testimony that we've heard over the past seven years, that there is more certainty than uncertainty. If this project is approved, it will go against the will of the people that I represent and it will go against the will of the people the supervisor Buster represents and based on hundreds of doctors who will put the health and safety of our residents in jeopardy. There will be no, no creation of new jobs in the near future as a result of this. And it will significantly increase the distrust of all public officials that look to the board of supervisors as a model for leadership, honesty, integrity, and democracy. Doug McAllister. You still here? I want to personally thank you for being a tremendous public official. Over the years, I value your friendship. You went through some tumultuous times in the city of Marietta. And you're leaving on top, my friend. And I agree with you wholeheartedly that local control is the most important function I think of government. I appreciate that Marietta supported Temecula's annexation efforts. I appreciate that Marietta stood with the city of Temecula opposing the quarry. And sacrificing that local control, control, like you said, is going to allow cancer to permeate that could have fatal consequences. My fellow colleagues, I hope that we make the right decision here today. One of the comments was, was mentioned in a prayer verse today by one of my fellow supervisors. I think the supervisor Ashley has said, quote, may we never be hasty in judgment. That's to me a divine message that with projects as complicated as quarries, we can't be hasty. We could be approving something that can be deadly to people that put their trust in us to make sure that we're following in their best interest. And then the last thing I'll, I'll say is just, I'm going to give my own little quote. And it's from the Talmud. Quote, honor a man for what he is, but honor him more for what he does. And I say, let's do the right thing today. Please, my fellow board members, please accept my amendments to this ordinance and I'll be happy to support it.
Okay. Thank you, supervisor Stone, supervisor Buster.
I also understand our labor leaders and many of our working people wanting to do everything they possibly can to spur jobs, additional jobs, job creation, movement of new business here. And as supervisor Stone has pointed out, this board has tried to hear those concerns and acted in every way possible. And maybe other things we can do that would practically result in spurring jobs. I don't think this is the, is the one. I mean, look at our processes, or look at this process. It has already been expedited, the, the second try as you were for the Liberty project, much more by the certification of the EIR than anything you could do by skipping planning commission meetings. Skipping planning commission meetings will be for on the second try. Under this ordinance, it'll be for all projects mining on the first, first try. But skipping planning commission meetings is a kind of a hazardous thing to do. But you do it. You can do it. We've done it. We've done it on a lot of projects successfully. But having public input, I think, improves the process, often improves the business conditions that are finally, finally agreed to. In the end, I think it's been a good, good thing for the county. We really haven't looked at other parts of the process. Maybe we can, maybe we can do more rather than skipping the planning commission to expedite jobs and other mining projects, whether they're interim things, revival of an old mine like, like Mr. the gentleman that came up and spoke about. Maybe we can do more by, by truncating or limiting other parts of the process, or even putting some county money into hiring additional consultants and putting more intensive deadlines to get their preparatory work done than skipping public hearings. It's interesting, you know, how strong this job argument is still today. But it was even stronger when the Liberty Quarry was first proposed. And yet the, if I'm not wrong, Liberty Quarry proponents did not, did not propose that. They didn't propose that the project be fast tracked. Why? Why now? What I fear, fear now is that, that it's not so much to get to jobs much more quickly, maybe a little more quickly by, you know, skipping the planning commission hearings, but it doesn't add up to much, in a grand scheme of things. It's more to get more quickly to a vote of this board on the project before the makeup of this board changes. Possibly changes. That's what this is about. So I think supervisor Stone's proposal, the supervisor from the district, you know, carrying fast tracks, I, I would implicit in that to me is that you can, you can do a fast track. You can do other things besides just skipping the planning commission meetings. And I think if we're going to apply this now to all new mines on their first try through the process, on their first project. And it is because we're in a serious economic situation that we can get out of, then there ought to be some, some termination of, of that process when our jobless rates return, for this county, return to Southern California levels. So I, I think where the, the process is, is, the process for all these public projects, let alone a large, complex one such as mines, is extremely important and we should not lightly change it. I'm willing to entertain that kind of a fast track for all upcoming mines on the, on the first, first go around even. But, but let's not just see it as skipping planning commission hearings. We can do, I think we can do other things to, to get, get these good projects approved and get the jobs going rather than, rather than undermining this, this two-stage planning commission board, board process that we had in place for so many years. And I'm looking at one mine out in the I-15 that, or the I-15 here at the crossings where they had the silica sand pits and they dug so, so closely I-15 freeway that, that the two lanes of it might have dropped into the hole had not been, had, had there not been very quick corrective work. So mines are tricky creatures and and I, I, I I see the lack of consistency here between the original application for Liberty Quarry when there was the strongest possible argument to be made on fast tracking that because we were in such a terrible recession. They didn't ask for it. Now coming back on the second round, it becomes the, it becomes the, the, the baton that they're clutching onto so, so hard. And to me, that's, that's more to get to, as I said, to get to a vote than it is, is to fast track jobs.
Okay. Thank you, supervisor Buster. Any further comments by members of the board?
Yeah. Yes, supervisor Benoit. Thank you for calling to another interesting, difficult, time-consuming, important day spent discussing, I think, a very important proposal before us today. And that is a proposal to amend county ordinances that would allow fast tracking of surface mines. It is worth noting that that is still a by and large going to be require county board of supervisors concurrence on a project-by-project basis to approve that any one project should go through the fast track process. I'm not sure that many surface mines will do that. However, it may be appropriate when a, when a particular project has already had eighty-plus hours of public scrutiny. Fifty-some hours of that in front of the planning commission and thirty-plus and continuing to grow hours in front of the board of supervisors. To say that that has not been publicly vetted is a little disingenuous, but, but, but this process that we are debating today would allow occasionally, and when appropriate, for this board to approve a fast track process. Nevertheless, it's clear that this will affect and is, has a direct relationship to the Liberty Quarry project, and that's been a lot of the discussions that's been here today. I, you know, I need to address a couple of things, you know. It's been repeatedly stated, although today was not as bad as some of the times in the past, but, you know, our honesty, our integrity, our belief in democracy, all these things have been questioned. Those of us who believe that we need to take another look at this project, you know, I don't, I, I don't like that. I think it's unfair characterization. And, but some people will have to go down that path and that's their right to say whatever they want to say when they come to the podium. I, I have never wavered since the ending of the public hearing on my belief that this is a project with countywide benefits. It has local impacts in my district. It has impacts across the entire region. The first one of which I think is critically important is that traffic congestion will be reduced when we remove tens of thousands of heavy-duty gravel truck miles from our freeway system. If you have a quarry near the project, material has to be transported a shorter distance. And there are a lot of projects that are going to be built in the southwest part of this county. There's just no question about it. And the major freeway improvements that we're doing in that area today, we have to bring that base from quarries much further away. A local quarry eliminates the distance involved in that travel. Which also relates to savings, significant savings to all taxpayers in the region who are paying the cost. The cost of the aggregate is directly related to the cost of the transportation to the work site from the quarry. And there's no getting over it. If you had transported twice as far, it's going to drive the price of the, of the aggregate up and it's a significant additional cost to taxpayers throughout the region. The cost to the taxpayers will go up if you have to transport the aggregate a long way. I haven't heard anybody that has disputed that. It will cost more. The air quality impacts. This proposal, should it be approved, would require, under the, the IR as revised and discussed, that the trucks, and there'll be many fewer miles driven by whatever trucks are using this quarry, but, but the trucks that remain will be much cleaner than those currently traveling our freeways by virtue of the fact that they will be required to be the next generation of a much cleaner type than the average gravel truck driving the road today. So I, I think that, you know, the argument that this only applies in one district is, is erroneous. The impacts of improving health by improving, by reducing the number of miles driven dramatically and, and making the trucks that are still traveling much cleaner dramatically. and making the trucks that are still traveling much cleaner dramatically, that impact and that health improvement will be throughout the region. There will be some revenue, there's a per-ton payment to Riverside County that's included in this proposal, there will be some additional sales tax revenue, and there will be some jobs, although I've never believed the jobs issued to be the main criteria. A lot of folks today, that's the thing that they're hitting on mostly, is that the jobs are not somehow real. There will be, many of the jobs will be much closer to this quarry. I can tell you that the quarries today, when they started, there may have been a few people that were working in those quarries that had come from a further quarry and transferred there, but over time, most of the people working in the quarries in my area live in my area. And in the interim, building of this project will require some good, high-paying, short-term jobs for the duration of the construction project. So there are some job impacts, but the biggest impact to me are the overall regional positive things that the region will have as a result of the reduced traffic congestion, the improved air quality throughout the region, and the savings to the taxpayers on every major project that we pay for collectively by measure A taxes that are collected throughout the region. So I respectfully have listened to, but also respectfully disagree that the impacts outweigh the benefits of this project, and I continue to believe that it would be important that we take this project back, this project particularly, allow it for fast-track so that this board can reconsider its original decision. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the amendments before us as provided by the staff.
Don't forget about the Agana veterans as well. Don't forget them.
All right, we have a motion, and we don't have a second. Yes Supervisor Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to respond to a few comments. Supervisor Benoit says that this project has been appropriately vetted, and therefore it doesn't need any more vetting or evaluation. Need I remind my fellow supervisor, it was voted down. It was not approved, it was disapproved. So if it was disapproved, then it should be vetted again. This is nothing more than a get-out-of-jail-free card for your friends at Granite Construction to get to the board, just like Supervisor Buster said, in a timely way. Talk about reducing traffic. If we have projects in southwest Riverside County, we have Roseberry's Mountains sitting there, not doing anything. There's plenty of aggregate there, and even by Granite's own admission, two-thirds of the aggregate that's being generated at the proposal Liberty Quarry is going to San Diego County. But you don't see the San Diego Board of Supervisors wanting to approve a quarry in San Diego County, because why? Because their citizens would be enraged, just like our citizens are enraged. But I have to say, I really appreciate the Supervisor Benoit admitted today that this was brought forward for one specific purpose. It was brought forward to allow Granite Construction to be expedited and to be heard by this existing board without any additional public input that would normally accompany a project of this size and magnitude and opposition. Fellow supervisors, Supervisor Ashley, I have supported you on issues for the past eight years.
Oh, you have?
Yes, I have. I have supported you on everything that's been important to you. I have not asked you publicly for support on anything, but I am here asking you today to please at least just support my amendment that basically says the fast-track will initiate, be initiated by the supervisor in the district in which the project resides. If I want to bring forward the fast-track, I'll bring forward. It goes up, it goes down. But please, let's keep our demising lines, not only for this project and today, but so we can set the example for future generations of supervisors, so we are not a board of supervisors that is going to be in chaos and getting involved into each of our political issues in all of our respective districts without knowing all the facts. We've always been very collegiate on the board of supervisors, but that collegiality is going down the drain unless we can show the citizens that we are transparent and we are fair, that our citizens' voices really do count. Please respect the will of the voters in southwest Riverside County that don't want this project, that has unverifiable benefits and significant potential impacts on them. Please, I ask, that you support my amendments. I'd like to do a substitute motion. I'd like to recommend staff recommendation with the amendments that I mentioned before. I'll be happy to read them into the record again, but I think our county clerk has those amendments. And also, it's been mentioned to me that solar farms are a part of the fast-track process. Let's put it in the language here. If Supervisor Benoit wants to fast-track a project of a solar farm in his district, I'd be happy to entertain it, but I will not be one to initiate a fast-track of a solar farm in his district because that's his business. So I hope that the board will please join me in that motion.
I'll second your motion, Supervisor Stone.
All right, we have a substitute motion, and seconded by Supervisor Buster. Jeff, would you please, Supervisor Stone, would you please clarify the substitute motion and what you would like included in it?
Yes, just give me just a second. I will support this ordinance with the caveat, the following language is included. On page one of the ordinance, line seventeen and a half, it says, "The board of supervisors shall have exclusive authority to hear, approve, conditionally approve, or disapprove any permit or approval included in a fast-track project." Asterisk, and here's what the asterisk will be, "exclusively brought forward by the supervisor representing the district the respective project resides in." So the first, also another part of the ordinance...
First item is to ensure that, your first amendment would be to ensure that it would be a local issue.
It means that a fast-track request would have to originate from the supervisor in the district in which that project is located.
Okay.
And any accompanying changes in the ordinance to reflect that direction. On ordinance three forty-eight point four seven five oh, on lines fifteen and a half, supervisors hereby deem it's appropriate and necessary to reserve itself the functions of the planning agency with respect to hearing any permit or approval included in the fast-track project. Asterisk, here's the asterisk, "only at the request of the supervisor in which district the project is contemplated." Other than that, Mr. Chairman, if we can put those amendments in, I would gladly support the fast-track with the best effort of providing a quicker way to deliver jobs in Riverside County.
Jeff, I would just ask that you clarify your, and this goes back to your initial comments before, two hours ago, when you talked about solar.
Yes.
So you want solar, and this is what I need clarification from council for, is solar included in this fast-track?
Do you have to have specific language?
Specific language? I can see it.
The board policy already allows fast-tracking of solar projects if they meet certain criteria, and also it's allowed by ordinance three forty-eight because it's permitted through a conditional use permit. So if you wanted to specifically fast-track solar projects, you would have the opportunity to do that, as the policy and ordinance three forty-eight currently exists today.
Mr. Chairman, I guess a reason to include this is really for the protection of my colleague in the fourth district, because if we include that here, that fast-track has to originate from him. It can't originate from me or any other board of supervisor. So, and I think he should reserve that right himself, and we should follow his direction as he wants to move any projects forward like that.
Well, the reason I asked is because when you were absent two weeks ago or three weeks ago, this issue came up on the, related to the fast-tracking for veterans and fast-tracking for local jobs, unemployed, et cetera. And I was told that we could not include that. I can support part of your motion, but I can't support the other side of the motion. I can support including solar. I think every project, and this is why I support fast-tracking today, I think we are in the worst times this county has seen in decades, and that we should do everything we can, and that means bypassing every project for planning commission to get it to us and get jobs produced quicker. I think we should be doing that. You can listen to me, we've listened to you for four hours, please respect each other. I, we just have a, you know, we can agree to disagree on this. This is the most, this is the worst time we've seen in decades in this county, and I am an advocate of getting people back to work, and if that means fast-tracking every damn project, then I, I will support that, and bypassing the planning commission along the way. So with that, I can support including the ordinance as it relates to solar, but not the local control issue. So we have a motion, a substitute motion with a second, and unless you want to modify your substitute, Supervisor Stone, then I can't support it.
Respectfully, I have to disagree.
Okay, and I understand that, and I respect that. We have a substitute motion and a second. Please vote. We're voting on the substitute first, yes. All right, motion is, fails, three to two. Now, we need a motion supporting item three point five six.
I move to support the staff recommendation.
Comment Supervisor Ashley.
I can't, I won't support it unless it includes solar.
Supervisor, can I, can I address that more specifically? Besides already being authorized, the fast-track requests for solar plants weren't included for a number of reasons, including the pending litigation as previously mentioned, the board's approval of its solar plant program is being challenged with that litigation, not specifically...
What's the harm in including it if you can do it anyway? This word is all it is.
I hesitate to comment anymore because we're involved in litigation.
Yeah, I think it ought to be, I think you can exclude it generically because it's already, I think we're just to be clear about it. And I oppose the, I didn't go along with, I really respect Supervisor Stone very much, and I've supported many, many of his projects, many of which were somewhat controversial. And also, I'm really a strong supporter of the wine country, which I know has people on both sides of the issue, is going to be quite a hearing here, and I've been supporting that. But I can't support, I didn't support the part about the district because, you know, I'm not worried about our current board, but you get into the future, that can be abused. Somebody in an area could take some worthwhile project and hold it back for whatever reason. And I think that, you know, these are not kingdoms, and we're not kings. So I think we have to leave that up to where the whole board decides that, even though it becomes very uncomfortable when, like Supervisor Stone's faced now with the project that he, you know, viscerally disagrees with and has strong local support. So I understand that, I feel so. So with that, I already, I'll support the motion, I'd like to see, solar included in there, unless council just says we should.
Mr. Chairman? Yes Supervisor Benoit, followed by Supervisor Buster, I think.
With respect to the comments by my good friend, Mr. Ashley, the most compelling reason why solar isn't in this policy as it's issued today or for us today is that it's already eligible for fast-track on two bases. The first one being that our existing board policy eight thirty-two says that any commercial industrial project that meets at least one of the following criteria may be eligible for fast-track to, to chase here. The project creates forty new jobs, the project results in a capital investment of at least five million, these are billion-dollar projects. The project will generate at least twelve point five million annual tax sales, or the project proposes at least fifteen, one hundred and fifty thousand square feet of building space, and it will incorporate into the following standards, and it goes into the list of environmental standards. Several of those criteria have been met by every solar project that we have approved or look to approve in the future. So it is, they are already eligible under our existing policies without modification. And so, on that basis, I would recommend we not delay the process on this one. Proposal is before us today because to require that would be a problem, I think, today. Well, I think councils were reluctant to include it now, and if you have a good argument, you can already do it anyway. I didn't see the harm in including something that you can already do anyway, but if it's going to cause a, council thinks it's a problem, I'll defer, I'll just...
Madam Council, I just have to ask, why, why is there a concern of simply including solar in the project, in this ordinance?
Why don't I just add, almost every single solar project involves multiple jurisdictions, and given the vast acreage in these projects, our timelines might not always dictate project processing step by step. And we will always, we will not always have control over the ultimate timeframe for project hearing and approval in light of, for example, oftentimes we have to have BLM approval before we can move forward on solar projects. So it's a lot more complicated when you're dealing with solar projects.
You know, every project's complicated.
It's not complicat, it's complicated, but that doesn't preclude us from adding the simple wording in solar, unless you're telling us legally we can.
We have to deal with the Corps of Engineers, the US Fish and Wildlife Service, Caltrans, everybody under the sun. It's multiple jurisdictional, any major project.
If that's the board's prerogative, then that's the board's prerogative, you can move forward with that.
Just mention it, solar. Say that again. Just mention the solar projects, keep it simple. Yeah, providing, providing they meet, you can say solar projects provide, they meet the criteria in the, in the fast-track orders that covers that project, so it still has to meet the forty million and so many employees and all that.
So is that a motion?
Yep.
Supervisor Ashley?
I would like to include a motion that you allow, or you allow the, we go ahead and approve the amendment with the modification that we include solar projects that qualify for fast-tracking under the other fast-tracking ordinance which the council can provide the number, I will appreciate it.
Okay, you wish to include that in your motion Supervisor Benoit?
Yes, I'll include that as requested.
Okay, we have a motion.
One question on that motion.
I'm sorry Supervisor Buster.
Counsel, I had a question. Yeah, does that weaken our defense of the lawsuit against the county?
I believe that's why the attorneys in our office that are, are working on that litigation have made that recommendation, that we not include it.
If you say you have a real good reason for not to include that, being this already on anyway, then I said I would defer, but I hadn't heard that clearly until now. So Supervisor Benoit, would you just go ahead and make the motion? Well, that was implicit, I believe, in what she had said earlier, maybe not quite as clearly stated, but it is, it is a potential problem, I don't know that it's a defining problem, but that's why, given the fact that we already have solar authority and other ordinances, I didn't think we should muddy the waters in that area.
Okay, I'll defer.
In that case, I would go with my original motion, which is to approve the staff recommendation as drafted.
Call for the questions. I'll for the questions. Yeah, I, I, Supervisor Benoit, unless, you know, we're, we're going to be subject to lawsuits on every single project we do. Excuse me, every single, every single project that we, that we approve, we could be subject to threat of litigation on every single project that we, that we approve just by a simple letter. And unless, I, I, I don't think it's unreasonable, despite the, the advice of council, and, and I will support the motion if it includes the simple addition of solar.
It looks like we don't have three votes unless we do that, so. And I can see that, I agree, that, I think that the overall importance of this policy outweighs any potential downside with regard to litigation, which may or may not be a factor, a huge factor on the other side, and I don't know that for a fact. But I clearly believe we need to move forward on this process, so I will continue to, I will make my motion once again and clarify that it's to, to approve the staff recommendation with the amendment that we include solar projects which otherwise would be eligible under our existing policy.
Okay. Second, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion passes three to two. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience. If there is any humor in any...